But, you know, like I said, we gotta have fun. So I will call the -- to order the work session for the Oregon City City Commission for Tuesday, March 8th, 2016. Paul, roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw and Mengeleberg are excused. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, future gin items?
No.
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to discussion items. 16-139, Oregon City System Development Charge, SDC Forum Follow-Up. Mr. Lewis?
Well, okay. Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. We wanted to bring back to you yet another follow-up on the SDC Forum. This is continuing to kinda drill down into possible changes or concepts for changes in our SDC code language. So John with the FCS Group, who you've met several times, put together a memorandum and PowerPoint, and he's gonna go through most of that in detail. I do have some items that I wanna bring as well, but for the most part, John's gonna cover that, so we'll get started.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. So what I'll basically be doing is summarizing--
For the record, can you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. John Gialdutucci with FCS Group.
Thank you.
I'll be summarizing the memo that I believe is in your packets on SDC Forum Follow-Up. We talked about a number of different ideas as part of that day in September when the SDC Forum was held. One of the concepts that drew quite a bit of support that day was the concept of reducing system development charges for redevelopment. So I will spend most of the time talking about that idea and some specific ways that the city could proceed to maybe address that idea. There were some other ideas that were floated at the SDC Forum. They didn't draw the kind of support that that one did, but I'll touch on those and then some potential next steps. So having to do with reducing SDCs for redevelopment, the city's existing practice is shown here. Essentially, redevelopment pays a system development charge for their incremental increase in demand over the most recent use of that property that's being developed, unless that most recent use was more than 10 years previous. If -- so if they're redeveloping it after more than 10 years, then they have to pay a full system development charge. That was actually a fairly recent change in the city's code. That period of time had been 18 months, and the commission then went through a process of lengthening that to 10 years. So one of the first ideas of five, that at least we thought of, there may be other ones, is that the city could eliminate the 10-year provision such that any time a vacant site is redeveloped, no matter how recently that redeveloping property owner would get credit for the most recent use, even if it was long ago. So that is an option that the city could pursue. We -- that second bullet was, I sort of wanted to raise the question of, I'm not sure how many redevelopments that would actually benefit, and one of the things that John was able to research is how many properties are out there.
Right. So with regard to how many properties are out there, we asked our GS group to do a kind of 11th-hour search on the mixed-use downtown, mixed-use MUC, basically the downtown corridor, the Malala corridor, and the 7th Street corridor, and do a search to find properties, how many of those are vacant today, and how many of those were vacant 10 years ago. And so, surprisingly, now this was a quick search, but surprisingly, there was about 200 vacant parcels. Now, that includes parking lots that have, you know, for buildings that are -- that need those parking lots, so whether, you know, when and if they'll develop is debatable, but there was 200 parcels that didn't have buildings on them today. 10 years ago, there was only, really, about 5% of those parcels had buildings on them. So there would really only be 10 lots that would get a credit if they came in today, based on our current code. That's a pretty big number, both from, you know, a property owner's perspective. There's two perspectives to think of this from. Obviously, any change we make that would extend that period of time and make it longer, for instance, would mean, you know, revenues, so it would be a revenue hit to us the longer we extend that out. How much? Hard to say, because a lot of those lots, you know, in our lifetime may never develop, but that's just one of those things to think about. The other thing that I wanted to remind you of, because it was a different commission back then, Rocky, you may remember this, but we spent a fair amount of time in 2014, and we talked about, I think staff recommended a four-year plan where if someone came in within four years, they would get a full credit for whatever that prior use is. If they came in in eight years, they would, somewhere between four and eight years, if they had had prior development on there in that timeframe, they would get 50%. City Commission discussed that quite a bit, and at the end of the day, they ended up with just simplifying it and going to a 10-year period as opposed to 18 months. So again, I understand the perspective, especially if you're a property owner in one of those areas that has development on it, or had development on it, but it's also a revenue hit, so I think it's an important one, and I think the city's come a long ways with the transition from 18 months to 10 years.
Like this next idea--
Commissioner Polly had a question.
Oh, sorry.
I have a real quick question while you're on that page. Do you know how many of those 200 vacant parcels actually were developed at any point in time? Do you have that information?
That's a really good question and is another kind of complication to this, which you'll see in future slides, is, you know, if we went to that, we'd definitely have to put the burden of proof on the property owner to share with us what that prior development was, but, you know, if we don't have a timeframe on it, 10 years is a long time, but we've got, at least we've got some information on that 10-year period. You know, taking that out, another 10 years gets, every year you extend it, the more difficult it becomes to figure out what was on there. So I think if we were to make that kind of a change, we would definitely place the burden of proof on the property owner. The challenge is, is we still need to come back and find a way to verify that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a challenge for this next one as well, is the information isn't readily available. So the second idea would be, instead of granting an SDC credit for the most recent use or the immediately preceding land use, allow the property owner, the redeveloping property owner, to get credit for the highest previous land use. So if it was now a parking lot and it had been a gas station, they would get credit for the gas station that had been there at some point in its history. There are arguments for and against this. I think one could argue pretty effectively that, you know, at the time that that site originally developed, or whatever its highest previous land use was, they purchased the capacity needed to serve that highest, most intense land use, and that that should stay with the property. The maybe cons or arguments against that is, first, you need the information, you need to be able to verify it, and then the second one is, you know, if you think about a property that may have been intensely developed as far back as 1950 or 60, and then there have been improvements since that time, you really have to question if the system, if the capacity is even there anymore that would serve that property. So those are the questions, and I guess arguments for and against, but another option. The third one, and this may provide the most flexibility to do what you want with it, it would just be buying down system development charges in certain areas. So if you had, you know, the downtown core that you wanted to designate for redevelopment, you draw a circle around it and buy down the SDCs for development or redevelopment in that area. The issue with doing that is, because of the constraints in SDC law, you really need to be doing that with an external funding source, so you're not creating subsidies within the SDC program. So it does give you flexibility, as long as you're not arbitrary and apply your rules consistently for those buy-downs, but it requires an external funding source in order to do it, and that's an obvious concern.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Mengeleberg is not here, because she brought up the idea of utilizing urban renewal funds for that and wanting to have a work session on discussing that, so we're kinda here to do that. I have mentioned that a couple times, and Eric has reminded me, well, we do have a program using urban renewal funds to--
General fund.
--general fund, to help, help me out here, Eric. Buy down--
Right. It's the Economic Development and Center Program that we recently established, and so that's citywide, and that can be used to buy down SDCs anywhere in the city. So it's very broad use for that program, so they just have to display hardship in their development, and if they're awarded, they can use it however they'd like to during the project.
How much is available for that?
A total of $150,000 for the biennium. We're looking at $75,000 a year.
Okay.
A fourth option, and this focuses on the improvement fee portion of the system development charge, would be to look at the planned projects for any of the different services and calculate an improvement fee that would apply in, let's say, the downtown core or the area to be redeveloped, and then an SDC for everything else, and hope that the SDC in the redevelopment area would be lower than the one outside. That's the one concern about this, is we, you don't know what the answer's gonna be. It just depends on how the projects shake out and the growth that's expected in the two areas in order to calculate those fees and see if it would be of benefit. So there's some risk to that one, as far as whether you would get the answer that you're looking for.
And it definitely complicates it on the, both the collection and the spending side, because then those dollars are intended--
Confined to those--
--for those areas, and that would be, that would make it even more difficult.
Why did we get to add a fund, though?
Say that again?
Why did we get to add a fund, though?
Focusing on the reimbursement fee, you could do the same thing, looking at the assets that are in the ground, the infrastructure that's in the ground, and again, draw a circle around the downtown core, the area to be developed, look at the cost of that infrastructure, and it's likely that the original cost of that infrastructure was less than the cost of infrastructure outside of it, so you may be able to develop a reimbursement fee that's lower in the redevelopment area or the downtown core than elsewhere in the city. Same type of idea, developing an area-specific reimbursement fee around that area to be redeveloped. But again, some risk in that you don't know exactly what the answer's gonna be until you look at it. So there, as I mentioned, there were a couple of other ideas, and these don't have to do with reducing SDCs for redevelopment. These were other sort of general input that was received before the SDC Forum, and then we talked about them more in detail at the Forum. The first bullet, expanding discounted SDCs for subareas, this is essentially similar to the ideas we just talked about, extending, the city currently provides a reduction in transportation SDCs for development in the regional center and along the 7th Malala Transit Corridor because of the mixed-use nature and the proximity to transit. So the idea is, could the city expand that type of concept, maybe to other services or to other areas, so that there were area-specific charges that were lower in redevelopment areas? There's, there is, when you take that kind of an approach, there is this constant balance that you're trying to strike between the equity of an approach like that, because you're confining cost recovery to the areas where the costs will be incurred, and that is technically more equitable, but it's also more complicated, and it can be, you know, somewhat impractical, just because you end up with numbers that vary a lot depending on where you are in the city. So it's something to be considered very seriously. It's also complex to administer and track, and you need information in order to calculate those type of area-specific charges. So as I mentioned, there wasn't a lot of support for this idea at the Forum. It's something that we, that could be pursued, if that was something that the commission wanted to pursue. The last one that we talked about at the Forum was reducing the size of the SDC project list as a way of reducing SDCs in Oregon City. And the one, the one, I think there was agreement around this idea of trying to keep the project list as comprehensive as possible and keep them whole, and if the resulting charges were higher than the commission was comfortable with, or that then the market would bear, then looking instead at just discounting those fees while leaving the lists intact, so that the city has as much flexibility as possible to spend the SDC money on any project on the project list, because the law requires that projects be on the SDC list in order to spend SDC revenues on those projects. So that was, that was just one, another way of getting perhaps to the same place, leaving the lists intact and as comprehensive as possible in order to maximize the city's flexibility to spend SDC funds.
I have a question on that one. So would you estimate the value to be lower? I mean, how do you estimate the value to be lower on a project that kind of has, you have an idea how much it would cost? How do you do that?
Well, you would actually leave the costs intact, so let's say you calculated a system development charge for whatever service, let's say it's $2,000. I know that's lower than they are currently. But if the commission decided 2,000 is too much, the commission could set any number up to that $2,000 without changing anything about the list and say, "Well, we're going to set the SDC at $1,500," and then you do that sort of knowing that you will not fully recover the cost of that whole project list, but as those funds come in, let's say five years from now, the city has the ability to choose the top priority on that list, whatever it might be, as opposed to if you had taken projects off the list, then you only have this shorter list to choose, to prioritize from. So you do it knowing you will under-recover revenue, but you have the flexibility to prioritize the projects as needed.
And you're just gonna go through the list slower?
Right.
Okay.
So--
We're gonna get through the list.
Well, yes.
Right. That's right.
Right. So that's a good point. You're never gonna get through the list, and it seems like, despite how high our SDCs, because of time, you're never gonna collect the money to build all those projects. What I like about the idea of a larger project list is it gives the city the flexibility to take care of projects that currently aren't on the list, that we know there's interest in completing. Now, should they have been on the list when we prioritize them? You could argue that, but for the most part, we picked a lot of good projects, it's just how well they're timed. Is there development in that particular area that maybe is moving forward now that didn't know about before? You know, is it a concept plan? Like Lynn Avenue's a good example of that. Those projects aren't listed on our funded project list. I'd like to add those, and this is one of the items that I'd like to bring back to you soonest, is a new look, a look with kind of the knowledge that we have now about what the development community is, what the, has got going on, what the city's vision is for growth, whether it be projects around the Willamette Falls area or downtown. Looking at our overall list again and saying, you know, really, the projects that are on there are good, let's add some others. That way, when whatever happens, grant funding, development comes to the table, we have the flexibility to be able to add that to the list. So I'm hopeful that this is one that the commission would support, 'cause I, I mean, I guess I'd like to get a nod of approval to definitely bring this one back and have you make a decision on that. So that's, that's that item.
So that would be expanding the project--
Be expanding the project list, and we'd give you the details and show you the pictures of all that.
I didn't see that one on your slide.
It's, in these potential next steps, it was that very last bullet is what I was trying to get at anyway, updating and making those lists more comprehensive as an option. The commission could also direct any number of different actions on reducing SDCs for redevelopment. We talked about those, and then mentioned the other ideas that were less supported at the Forum, and that was expanding area-specific SDCs, then we talked about the project lists.
Okay. That's it. Any else? Questions? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you're good with us bringing back more specific details for decisions?
Yes.
Okay.
Or at least a discussion. So next up, 16-141, the Tourism Strategic Plan Presentation by Doug Laplaca, CEO and Principal, Advisor of Point B Destination Advisors, and Jonathan Stone, Executive Director of the Downtown Oregon City Association.
Hi.
Evening.
You all know me, but I'd like to introduce Doug--
Hi, Doug.
--who is a hardcore skier, apparently.
Another reason not to ride anything that doesn't have a key, is shut it off.
Just learned this evening that last year, he broke his other leg, so--
Oh, no.
That was not for public--
I'm sorry.
We can call you Mayor DeReemer.
So it's not a testament to the mountains in Mount Bachelor, is it?
No.
No, okay. But anyways, thank you for listening to the presentation this evening. I just, before I hand it over to Doug, I just wanna give you sort of a brief overview in terms of why am I here and why is Doug here. We, I was part of a conversation with the Oregon City Tourism Council, which is the loosely-formed group that administers CPP funds, which is the county partnership program, and Alice Norris had applied for a grant in collaboration with the city's Economic Development Department to fund a study on tourism strategy or tourism management, I suppose, moving forward. And so that project was awarded, but stalled just due to any number of factors, and so we were able to get an extension from the county to pick up the pieces of that project and start moving forward as of June of last year. And so I was largely involved with that sort of resurrection effort of that grant and then the project, and so that's kind of how, I guess, that's why I'm here. Doug is here because a group of four of us, as a part of the Oregon City Tourism Council, wrote a RFP and received a number of applicants from very qualified individuals, and ultimately chose Doug's proposal to do this project for Oregon City. It's a bit of an interesting process, because I'm not the city, the people representing the group are not the city, and ultimately, the client is sort of the city, and so we thank you for your patience and for all of our stakeholders' patience in terms of sort of unusual path to, that we took to get to today. But I'm confident that what Doug has to say and what's in the plan is something that the tourism community and heritage community in Oregon City largely support, in that I think is very actionable on the part of the commission. There's a number of people that express their regrets for not being here this evening, and you should have received a few additional letters of support--
We did.
--from the chamber, the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, I believe, as well as one other this afternoon, but, so that a lot of people have come out and spoken in support of this. When we presented, I believe it was in December, it was an ask to sort of go back and sort of discuss with stakeholders. We held a tourism roundtable meeting last month in which there was, by large, there was general consensus on the major key points of the plan, and that the group that was president, which I believe there was 20 to 30 of them there, that basically said, "Yes, let's move forward, let's get the commission's buy-in, so that we can start on the right steps to, you know, take advantage of the momentum that is building around tourism and the industry in Oregon City." So with that, I'll hand it over to Doug.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Commissioners. I know that the plan has been circulated publicly for the past couple of months, so out of respect for your time, I can just open it up to Q and A, or I can take you through a 15-minute executive summary of the plan. Do you have a preference?
Do you guys have a preference?
Maybe a summary--
Okay.
And then we'll have Q and A.
Sounds good. I'll move quickly, and feel free to interrupt me if you have questions. So my name is Doug Laplaca. My company is Point B Destination Advisors, and we were hired this past August to help Oregon City establish the strategic tourism plan. In the RFP, the plan was to include recommendations on organizational infrastructure, a near-and-long-term financial strategy, and step-by-step timeline to implement the strategy. So the plan that we have submitted to the community includes all of those elements. In terms of the methodology of our work, this is a tried-and-true formula that we apply to all the destinations that we work with. It starts with a comprehensive due diligence and research phase, and then moves into a strategic brainstorming and planning stage internally, and then it moves on to collaboration and consensus building with the community, and then the fourth step is presentations of recommendations to community leadership, and that's where we are now. In terms of the sources that guided our recommendation, there were many. It was a three-month research process that included 14 interviews and research with several source documents and websites, including the recommendations that previous tourism consultants had made. Coming out of the research phase of our process, we identify what we call key findings and directional observations, and that's the collection of salient points that we have identified in the community that lead to our recommendation. Now, in the full plan that we have submitted, there are many key findings and directional observations, but for the purpose of this executive summary, I wanted to share just a few with you. The first is that, our belief is that there is not a city in the western half of the United States with a more compelling collection of historical attractions than Oregon City. From a tourism perspective, Oregon City's heritage attractions have the potential of supporting a thriving year-round tourism industry with national appeal. The second key finding was that, on the flip side, Oregon City's tourism industry is significantly underachieving in relation to its potential. The next directional observation was that there are enough tourism assets and tourism potential to eventually justify a full-service and dedicated destination marketing organization in Oregon City. This is our recommendation for the long term, but the, from a resource standpoint, the community is not ready for that right now. Our next observation was that the time to evolve is now. Oregon City is coming of age, there is significant community momentum, and we believe it's time for Oregon City's tourism industry to organize, collaboratively plan for a lucrative future, and implement this plan. And what we mean by that is all of the stuff that you guys are so familiar with. There is so much focus on the future of Oregon City. We believe that now is the perfect time to get strategic and organized from a tourism perspective. Our next finding was that the countywide tourism promotion effort is strong and well-funded, but alone is not enough to achieve Oregon City's tourism potential. A city-specific, dedicated DMO and tourism strategy is needed, and is our recommendation. Our next directional observation was that, is that Oregon City's heritage assets are the foundation and the hook of Oregon City tourism. Even without the Riverwalk Legacy Project, Oregon City possesses enormous-- Project, Oregon City possesses enormous unmet heritage tourism potential. Outdoor recreation and agritourism are very important tourism segments that merit Oregon City's cultivation and aggressive promotion. But heritage tourism is the segment that has the power and potential to differentiate Oregon City tourism from every other destination on the West Coast. It is our recommendation to fortify Oregon City's heritage tourism segment, then incorporate the other tourism segments into the rising tide. And the final key finding that I'll share with you is this. It's that consultants have made recommendations in the past that have not been implemented in Oregon City. Their observations and recommendations are not significantly different from ours. So we asked a lot of questions about why the advice of the previous consultants had not been enacted. And what we learned is the previous recommendations required too much change all at once. Additionally, the previous recommendations did not provide a manageable implementation plan to achieve the goals and objectives. So we designed our entire recommendation around breaking the recommendation into bite-sized chunks that could be achieved on an ongoing basis. Okay, once we digested all the key findings and directional observations, the next part of the work that we were hired to do for Oregon City was to identify all of the potential options of how we could, as a community, invest the tourism promotion funds. And there were many. And I'm not going to walk you through all of those, because that would take more time than we have tonight. But what we landed on was option number five in the plan, and it's the plan that we called the Milestone Plan to Long-Term Success. And that is the plan that's reflected in the infograph that I know has been going around. Essentially, what we did is we identified the long-term goal as implementing a, oh, thank you, as implementing a full-service destination marketing organization. But in order to get there, we laid out the key milestones in three specific responsibility pillars, if you will, and laid out milestone projects over 12-month incremental periods that would end with the opening of a full-service DMO. And in the infograph that I'm sure you've seen, we divided the responsibilities into the three primary pillars of heritage asset operations, tourism promotion, and financial strategy. And then after we identified what the key milestone projects would be on an annual basis, we made a recommendation on what the leadership groups for each pillar would look like. And those leadership groups for the heritage asset operations would consist of council-appointed leadership within the heritage community. The tourism promotion segment leadership group would be, would consist of council-appointed tourism leadership. And then the financial strategy pillar would be led by the Oregon City, the city staff. Would you like to go through each of the milestone projects, or should we leave it there and open it up to questions?
What do you guys want to do?
What do you think? I've been through it.
We know you have, Rocky.
More than five times.
Yeah, I'm okay.
But.
I'm good.
Mayor, would you like to go through it, or are you good also?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. So with that, Jonathan, would you like to add anything to the overview?
Sure. I mean, we've had a number of conversations with staff about this plan and, you know, trying to understand how this is something that the commission can move forward with, without, in terms of managing, also managing and understanding what the expectations are if you guys do choose to move forward. And what Doug has proposed is a framework. And things change, new discoveries are made. But if the community, and if you guys ultimately believe his recommendation that a destination marketing organization is the ultimate goal, then the tourism promotion pillar is the right set of steps to ultimately grow into that full-functioning organization. If you guys believe that our heritage asset operation, the operations of our heritage assets needs to be bolstered, then, and we want to have sort of a unified experience around those things, then those milestones are appropriate steps forward to ultimately reach that, the unification that he mentions. The $390,000 that is written at the end of 48 months, and that's an ongoing, every-year expense guesstimate, it can seem daunting. And what we've discussed is that that's a goal, but it's not a requirement. And that each step forward is better than the last step, or no step. And that, what it represents as you move from milestone to milestone is the capacity of Oregon City tourism and the need for Oregon City tourism to have that higher and higher level of coordination and investment. And, you know, if we don't get another hotel, if we don't identify further grants to support continued financial growth in this plan, then we stay at milestone one until Oregon City, the industry, is ready to move to milestone two. And so there's been a lot of conversation around, you know, how do all of our tourism stakeholders, how are they all represented in this plan? And I would say first and foremost that they're invited to the table at each of the appointed groups that you guys, if you choose to follow the structure that Doug has proposed, to be a part of that process in terms of tourism promotion. The so-called heritage trail, what it really is is a product-based marketing effort. And that says that we can't, we don't have the dollars yet to market every last inch of Oregon City, but we need to hook around a brand that can be, that you're going to get more bang for your buck, so to speak. And, but with the idea of, just, I mean, I suppose just like Mount Hood Territory does, what they do is they say, hey, we're a giant mountain that you can see from outside the territory in Portland. That's our hook. But there's so much more we offer around the mountain. What Doug is recommending is, we are the first incorporated city. We are the end of the Oregon Trail. We are the Willamette Falls. We are the whatever. All this stuff that it plugs into our cultural heritage is ultimately what is going to get people to pay attention initially, or at least when you're spending the limited resources that you have that are going to give you the greatest return on investment. We've spoken with Outdoor Rec and other stakeholders, and there's opportunity there for them to participate in that kind of initial product. As the plan grows, as more and more things are, the capacity increases, then there'll be a lot more full-service promotion around all of those different things.
So of all of this, I have the one big if I have, and that is in column one, heritage assets operations. It seems like you take a jump from everybody kind of being off on their own in the first 12 months to everybody's all together and unified in one group in, at the top. But I don't see any work along the way to get us there. We.
Yeah, the, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to. The 12-month plan on the heritage asset operations would be for all of the heritage asset operations to work together with the available funds. I'm sorry?
He's talking about getting to there.
Yep. And so the first step in 12 months would be to have all of their attractions open the same five days of the week. So they can do that with separate management, but they need to collaborate and coordinate those schedules and work together to best allocate the funds.
So how do we get to overall centralized management of all of the facilities?
Implementation of this plan does not rely on that. I think that, once they achieve the milestones, then those would be very meaningful steps towards that. But if that, at the end of the three milestones, in the first three years, if that's still not an attractive opportunity locally, then they don't have to unify in order for this plan to be successful.
Okay. Who else?
I'm sure. I think it's hard to answer that question, because it really depends on what comes out of the working groups. So it's the three working groups, the financial pillar, the tourism promotion, and the heritage assets. So to me, we need coordination, and we have all these great groups out there. So to finally get everybody coordinated and to finally just get it organized and get some sort of structure in place is a huge step. And it's hard to believe that it hasn't happened before now, but maybe people just weren't ready for it. And I think the phased approach, maybe that's what is bringing people together, because it can be done in bite-sized pieces. We can break it down. There's options. And I think the working groups will determine which way things go.
Okay.
And if they're not, you know, ready to make a certain change, it won't happen. And if they are, then it will happen. But to get everybody at the same table, you know, working together, and get the three groups where everybody has their expertise working together, I, that's what needs to happen in order to get coordinated and do something with tourism in Oregon City. And I don't want to see any more museums close or fall into disrepair or move backwards. I want to move forwards.
If I may interject, the, one of the comments that has come out of this whole process, and it identifies a number of different needs, and some of those needs are being met through the Legacy Project and in terms of the planning for that, in terms of how that is addressed, you know, what happens when we create this demand for all these people? How do we respond to all these people? But the idea of a policy-based tourism group, at least initially, could be part of this mix. And I know that the recommendation, you know, wants to make sure that whatever we're doing is in the best interest of Oregon City. And, but that has, but that finally Oregon City has sort of vested an authority of tourism, just like it's vested authority for other things into other groups, that however we step out of this meeting tonight and step forward is that, it's that you guys are comfortable with the fact that a leadership structure has been established in one that you guys trust to have the best interest of tourism and tourism-related economic development in Oregon City.
So I noticed something here that kind of caught my attention in your miscellaneous notes. It says, "The city's economic development department should," oh, no, that's not the one. "Having shared development director Grant Ryder house in the city's economic development department to support all cultural organization and tourism objectives is a smart idea and a good development strategy for the future, for the city." Is that part of this number?
The $120,000, I would assume so. The first milestone, is that what you're talking about?
No, I mean, is that position, is that FTE in any of these numbers?
No.
Okay.
So the first phase is existing room tax collections, so there wouldn't have to be any additional fundraising to achieve tier one.
Right. Okay. Mr. Smith?
Do you think I have anything to say? Yeah. So I think this has been a long, a long, long process, and it's not even started. So I think what I want to say is, if I leave this meeting tonight, and this is where we end it, I have no idea with this meeting where we're going. And I think that for myself and most of the people sitting in this audience that have worked on tourism in Oregon City for 20-plus years or more, we all know that it's time to start addressing this. It's, some of these topics and some of these even, even some of the specifics of this plan have been done or tried in some respect in the past. But the real question is the leadership question, which is, who is going to drive this? Because when we leave tonight, Jonathan's not going to drive this. When we leave tonight, Doug's not going to drive this. When we leave tonight, the Chamber's not going to drive this. And the question is, is the city going to drive this? If the city's not going to drive this, how is the city going to play a part in finding out who drives it? And how do we answer those questions before a year from now? And that's my real question. And that's a question to this commission, is, we have seen this very strategic effort by many people in this community to say to the commission that tourism is vitally important to economic development and the future of Oregon City. And if there's any time to figure it out, it's now. And that means, from the way I look at it, if this is not a priority on the commission's radar, a top priority in the next goal session, in the next two years, in the next two-year budget cycle, I think that's a major problem. I think, you know, so what do we do as the current commission to make sure that we are working in a partnership with all the people here at the table to move forward in the next year, to make sure that by the end of this year, that the next commission has the knowledge or the thought to move forward on something? And, you know, there might be pieces of this. There might be the whole part of this plan. But I think what we need to do is work through the questions that a lot of us have. You and I, I mean, I'm fully in support of it, but I still have huge questions. And a lot of people still have huge questions. So how do we use this time in the next, you know, 10, 11 months to really work through those questions so that we have kind of a viewpoint of where we want to go? I just fear that if the city itself, or the commission itself, doesn't step up and really take a lead, and that doesn't mean that it has to all be under the city. It just means the city has to have the ability to real, to identify this is a top priority for the city. And I think so, you know, if we leave here tonight, those are the questions that we need to figure out. And unfortunately, the whole commission's not here tonight. I think I'm a little disappointed by the fact that this is at least the third meeting as a commission that we've gone to talk about it. And I've sat through probably at least five presentations of this. And so I guess the last thing I want to do is leave here tonight with, you know, two commissioners not here, even, I know Brian and was.
Renato was generally not supposed to be here tonight, so.
And, but I'm just saying, we, as a commission, at some point have to have a dialogue about where we go.
If I may interject and offer some steps that I think you guys have an opportunity to maybe make tonight. The, so adoption of this plan, I don't think means, oh, man, we're going to spend $390,000 in four years. It just means that we want to build tourism, and here's likely steps, but that it, you know, we're going to put a bunch of smart people in the right rooms, and they're going to hash this out over the coming years with this as their guide, you know? But they might discover something different along the way. If we were to leave tonight with consensus that we want to have at least a heritage asset operating group formed, that we at least want to have a tourism promotion group formed, and that we are comfortable with using tourism funds to hire a facilitator, then what you've done is you've kept the ball rolling, and then you've set their sights on milestone one. Another thing that I would hope that there could be consensus on is that, and as long as there's enough, enough sort of organizational momentum around this plan, moving into the next commission, whoever the next commission is, is that there's not, hopefully not a likelihood that strategies will change drastically and they'll pull the rug out of underneath the funding, or at least the available funding, for continuing to move forward on this plan. So what I mean is, don't yank the tourism dollars and start to spend it on, I should have come up with a better example, I don't know, but something, something crazy, you know, that isn't in the interest of tourism. Legally, you can't, but, you know, that generally, that these groups that are going to form are. are believing that there's going to be continued resource growth towards this plan, and that they're working towards, these milestones are going to continue to be supported to the extent that the commission feels comfortable, and to the extent that the lodging tax base grows. And hopefully, in four years, as tourism grows, hotels come in, there's not going to be a lot of hard discussions about funding, because the problem answers itself.
Okay. So, here's what I would propose. I think we should adopt the plan, you know, have it, put it on at the next available meeting to adopt the plan. We can have any nitpicky discussions about, you know, little pieces inside there at that time. I would recommend that we appoint a new Tourism Heritage Advisory Committee, and it would consist of an individual from each of the organizations, with, and they would elect their chair internally, and they would report jointly to Mr. Underwood and Mr. Archer. Because I think there's a, you know, it's about a half-and-half kind of thing between, you know, the community services piece and the economic development piece. I think the city has to keep control of the money. So, I think that's the way you do it, is you have this Tourism Heritage Advisory Committee, and underneath that committee, you would have your three pillar groups, and they could form those however they choose. That gets us going in the right direction, and it still allows the city to be able to have control and maintain updates and all those kinds of things. And that's just an idea, I'm just tossing it out.
I think that's, I think that's good. I think it's very important to have that city commitment there, and to kind of be the glue that holds everything together. I think, I think that's very important.
I know that there's probably people in the audience that want to speak on this topic. I know we don't normally do that, but I know that there's probably people that at least want to say something, if not now, at another meeting. I just.
Hang on. So, if you do have something brief to say, would you raise your hand, just so I can get an idea? All right. All right, I think we can do that. So, go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
That's all, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, when we say like, when we say that we're going to bring this to a next commission meeting and adopt it, there's a lot of questions there, so I want, because I'm not sure if we're.
Or discuss adoption, I guess would be a better term.
Exactly. So, but I want at least to get, let them have the opportunity, some of the people to speak on some of the questions that they have.
Mr. Con, or Mayor, Manager?
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, I do have, while I was writing down notes on your recommendation for how to put together the advisory committee.
Yeah.
I would like to make some comments, probably would like to hear from folks in the audience first, but we'd had a really healthy discussion amongst staff in support of what the commissioners' directions have been to us, and like to recap that before.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, Mr. Gifford and Mr. Blaine Meyer, there we go. Well, I only have two seats, you'll have to, you were third up.
I'll go my way.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford of the New Oregon City. Let me be blunt, I don't like this plan.
As opposed to?
I don't like this plan. And I haven't read it in depth, and I apologize for that, but what I don't hear at the very outset is a definition of tourism. And to me, a definition of tourism is money that comes from outside the region into Oregon City, and I think that's what we want. We want money to come outside our community and bring it into our city, so that our city is wealthier. And if we look at that as a definition, which is different than the county's definition, the county's definition is somebody that comes from, what, over 50 miles away, and spends one night. We don't need somebody to spend one night. Drive in from Portland and spend a bucket of money here, I'll call that tourism. So, I think the definition of tourism is important. When I think of how tourism is further defined, one is historical. Historic attractions are a huge portion of it, but it's not the only portion. There's also recreational tourism, which I don't feel is addressed nearly enough, and the least, and possibly one of the most insignificant, is retail tourism. And I'm not talking about just coming in to buy things at our retail centers, it's also services that we provide. People would come here to spend money, whether it's for a kayak ride, or a tour of a museum, or to buy a hat. I consider all of that tourism, and I really don't see that addressed here. This is an economic development engine, and should be treated as one. That's my comment.
Thanks, sir. Blaine?
Oh, Blaine Meyer, and I'm an incorporated Oregon City, but own a couple of businesses here in town, as you know, so. I just wanted to, you know, involved in tourism. One of the businesses is very tourism-related, so I've had the opportunity to talk about this with a number of people. And first off, I really, really love the energy that we have. I mean, you folks know that this city has so many assets and so much energy, and we have a dozen or more operators, and, you know, riverboat tours, and bicycle tours, and the museums, it's all great. And then we also have a couple of DMOs that do a lot of work, Travel Oregon and Mount Hood Territory particularly does a lot of work to promote, and, you know, we're kind of the center of most of that, but anyway. The plan that was done, I support the plan, my issue is one more of timing. So, at our last meeting, we talked about, at the Pioneer Center, we talked about Milestone Zero, and all three of you have talked about that, and that's the leadership gap. You know, before we start implementing, basically, the plan calls for new programs, the Heritage Trail, I love the idea, wonderful, I hope we implement it. But it is a new program, in addition to a dozen programs that we have already, and it calls for promotion through a DMO. We already have DMOs that are promoting, now, not specifically Oregon City, I agree with that, but I think that there needs to be coordination with, particularly Mount Hood Territory, they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to promote our region, and Oregon City is pretty much right in the center of that. So, I don't think it would be much, it wouldn't take much effort to partner with them, to get a little more specific on Oregon City, but. So, before we start implementing new programs and new promotional program, you know, structure, let's, let's form the leadership, the policymaking, the planning, let's get that together, so I concur with your suggestions, your ideas. I think there should be representation on that committee, from the city, staff person, which you've already said that, a commissioner, some of the stakeholders, maybe someone from Mount Hood Territory, or Travel Oregon, or Travel Portland, that could, you get as many players around, then now you can make those decisions and make those plans, and you have, I think, I think I've heard someone say that you give a spine to the, you know, it's the hub in the wheel, if you want to use the bicycle metaphor, but that is what is needed to do the planning, and, you know, the.
Wagon metaphor.
Yeah, covered wagon metaphor.
Yeah.
I think too, there's, and this is something that this committee, this person in the committee could determine, you know, there's an assumption that we need more tourists. Well, that may be true right now, in a few more years, that with the River Walk coming online, that may not be the case, we may have more people that we know what to deal with, may not come all at once, but there may be a lot of people that are going to respond. If Sam Drivo gets his way, and the water park is incorporated that, it's going to be, there are going to be so many people we won't know what to do with. So, you know, there's an assumption that we need more tourists, and while it might be now, I don't think it's going to be in the near future. And also, again, back to the DMO, I, you know, I don't know that we need to start our own DMO more than just strategically work with other DMOs and turbocharge what they're doing.
Thanks, Blaine.
Yep.
Hi there, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, so, I'm Claire.
There we go.
I'm Claire Blaylock, I'm the Executive Director of the Clackamas County Historical Society. I live here in Oregon City, my husband and I just moved up to the top of the hill. And I've been here a year in this position, and it's been a really exciting year, and I've been involved with this process for that entire time. And I know one of the sort of sticking points for people with the heritage community has been lack of coordination, and wanting, and you've said that, Mr. Mayor, before, that you want to see everybody working together. And I can say unequivocally that the heritage community in Oregon City has really come together to work for this plan. We do all want to sit down at the table, because we do see tourism as our way forward, as something we are deeply committed to, and as Commissioner Polly says as well, we don't want to see any more museums closed. We don't want to see those struggles continue. We want to approach our organizations with an eye towards stability, and this plan gives us certainly the foundations to move forward with that, and to be more than just something that contributes to the cultural heritage of our community, but also, you know, the financial stability of Oregon City in general. So, we, I won't, I won't deign to speak on behalf of the heritage community, but I think many people feel very strongly that this plan is certainly the best way forward that we've had in quite some time.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
So.
I think there's might be a couple.
Okay, Jerry, come on up. No, that's all right, if you wanted to say something, three minutes.
Jerry Herman, good to be here. I spent probably the last 30 years working on river tourism stuff, and I think I've got it down fairly well now. But, the reason I guess I'm here is, I feel a lot like Blaine does, that there's some steps that still need to come together, and I liked the mayor's analysis of developing, one, the stature and sovereignty of the city being in charge, that's very important, I think, and this development of a committee. I spent the last week in Astoria with all my guides, there's eight young people that are very well-trained now, that are going to be a part of another tour here in Oregon City, and hopefully more in the future, I want to see this continue through the high school program, because it's really working well. We looked at Astoria from the standpoint of the assets, who's been in charge, and what changes did they have to make? If you think about Astoria for just a minute, it was fishing community, logging interests, and then the major accommodation of large giraffe vessels coming in there, that's what they were. And they've made this adjustment in what they do now, to be embracing tourism, that's a major change for a resource extraction community, they thought of themselves much differently, you know, 10 years ago. Now, they made the jump, the reason I say this is that they don't have a visitor's burl, they do have some chamber involvement, but they got together, which is everyone's dream, they have an ambassador's group, we met them, 70 of them, that are trained to go out and greet the ships that come in, or be a part of any group tour that comes down by bus. And I would hope that in addition to the plan's basic premises, that the unity that would evolve would be important, I think that's what you want. I'm not so sure about subsidizing, I've heard a lot of discussion during this time with this plan being discussed, that there was possibly some subsidy going to maybe flow through to heritage organizations, where do you stop that? Shall we subsidize river tour ticket prices? Sam Drivo, I know, read, produced a large document that he sent around about his concerns. I, all I want to say is that the plan is a framework to begin with, but we need to think about some implications here. You start subsidizing operations, you better know what you're doing, because everyone could ask for that. I'm not going to ask for it, my tour is either go by the ticket price, or they die. All right? But down there, they generally made it work on the cost of income versus expenses, and they've done it well. And of course, they have a big market of people coming in in big vessels, but they made a group come together, their ambassador group, to serve their needs down there, and I just, it's remarkable to me what they've done in Astoria. A community that had no interest in tourism, has now turned its whole approach and works together, so, that's my comments.
Thanks, Jerry. Sam?
Sam Drivo, I'm a small business owner here in Oregon City, and I'll keep it brief, but I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank John and Doug for putting the time into really bringing this to the forefront. I think it's a really important issue for Oregon City, an opportunity, I would say. And I just, I support the continued development of this conversation, I think a really intelligent way to go, and something after Doug's first presentation, I was like, well Doug, why don't you come here weekly, and we can meet on this, and, you know, work on refining this, and unfortunately, it's a bit of a trip for him, but I do think that, you know, having a facilitator that can continue to create buy-in from all the people that have a stake could really help refine this, and the framework is great, and I think that this needs to be a priority for the city. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, last chance. Anybody else? All right.
Do you want to hear any follow-up comments?
No, I don't think so, not right now. Do you have?
I just think that we need to make tourism a priority, and I think we need to get it on our list as a commission, and you've got to start somewhere. So, a framework, a good framework, and working groups with all the stakeholders is a great place to start.
Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mayor Holliday, and City Commissioners. Again, what I'd like to do is see if I can summarize in a concise way, I think where we're at with this plan, and what the expectation is, the commission has given us in the past, and how we think we might be able to move forward. Just to put perspective on it, so, we had met with Jonathan and Doug, and a couple of commissioners have been involved in the process of kind of continuing the momentum, and a lot of momentum has been built by the efforts of Jonathan, and he sort of stepped outside his zone to make this happen for us. I think we're in a good place. A couple of things to keep in mind, what I would recommend is the commission consider consensus to approve moving forward with a plan for comprehensive tourism analysis. This plan is very conceptual in nature, by design. Jonathan and Doug had met with Tony and Eric and I, and we talked about this, and the thing that Jonathan was charged with is, look out and see if something's feasible, and get us some momentum going, to see if we can do it. And Doug walked us through the milestones, and at no time did he say, you have to do these things, he's very open, and said, this is a framework, that he has tested in the, you know, central Oregon area, and he's seen it be successful, but there's nuances that need to be worked out. So, what I might recommend is the commission, along the lines of what the mayor suggested, is the commission tonight reach some consensus to continue to consider this plan, that maybe we could draft a resolution that would give a little bit more teeth for the commission later, to support tourism on a comprehensive basis, and possibly form a tourism advisory committee that would oversee those other groups, I think that's an excellent idea. And that could be the charge for staff moving forward, that we could discuss at a commission retreat upcoming. And in the meantime, and we had talked about this a little bit with some slight variations, but, and in the meantime, the commission made a decision to hold transient room tax dollars, aside from the grantee process, and I wanted to share with you, you know, we'll probably have at the end of this year, $200,000 available to maintain the momentum that we've had. It's been suggested that we hire a facilitator to work with these work groups that would answer to the umbrella of the Transportation Advisory Committee group this summer, and answer some of those questions that we have. And I do, I know that Jonathan and Doug had explained very carefully, their concept is that, the way Jonathan explained it, Ben has the mountain, we have these great heritage assets, but we should have recreation at the table, as some of the folks talked about, define tourism further. So, bottom line, consider consensus to move forward when the commission's here, bring forth a resolution that says we support a grand tourism program, possible implementation, if that's what you choose, of the Tourism Advisory Committee, and moving forward this summer with a facilitator to work with, molding that committee for how all of the players would like to see it, and then present that to you as a commission to consider. That's what I would recommend.
Sounds good. I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
The one thing is, as you're developing that plan, I'd like to know what the ballpark costs are for the facilitator, and also, if we're going to staff this Tourism Heritage Advisory Committee, what the cost would be involved to staffing that?
I think it is, Mr. Palmer said, I think this would be a good discussion item for some of those things that have come up since we created our goals last year, so on Saturday we'll have an opportunity to talk about this a little bit more, what are the opportunities? What is the commission, where does this rank in balancing all the commitments? What is the commission, where does this rank in balancing all the commitments that we have?
So, I think, and Jerry made a good point, he caught my ear, with the fact that Astoria has got these big boats, ships actually coming in, and, you know, offloading people. Well, I think we're still building the dock, and, you know, in three, or four, or five years, those ships are going to start to show up in the form of, so now is the time to get the process done, to have the things in place so that we know how to do that. I don't necessarily think that this is the end-all, be-all of, if we didn't have the Riverwalk and the Legacy Project, I'm not sure I would be thinking about this in the same way, because I've been hearing people tell me about how historical tourism was going to change Oregon City for the better for more than thirty years. You know, the end of the Oregon Trail Interpreters Center was going to draw in hundreds of thousands of visitors, and I still have the Collins Report that says it. So, I do think that we have something solid that's going to happen, and we should put the process in place, but I don't see the implementation as, you know, we have to do all of this right now. And so I think a steady, measured approach to going there is the way to go.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So, I see Catherine snuck into the back of the room. So, next up, we have the Lamont Falls Legacy Project Riverwalk and Development Strategy update. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Commissioner. So, we're going to ask up Christina Robertson Gardner and Catherine Cragger to give you an update on where we're at with the Riverwalk process, our development strategy, what you can expect to see in the next coming months, and then answer any questions that you may have as we go forward. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the experts.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday and Commissioners. Happy to be here tonight. I do, I did bring a few slides that are descriptive, and I hope they help describe the project for you. The first thing I wanted to mention is we have, is that the last time I was here, I briefed you on the intergovernmental agreement with, between the partners, all four of the partners, and it has been approved by the Partners Group and by Oregon City. You guys did it last a couple of weeks ago, as did Clackamas County. The State Board has approved it, and Metro will consideration, is considering approval on May 31st. We're having, March 31st, sorry. There's a council meeting here in Oregon City at the Abernathy Center, so, looking forward to that. You know the structure, we use this, what?
I thought it was at moot.
Oh, you're right. Moot.
The Museum of the Oregon Territory.
That's why I have Christina with me at all times.
There was one at the Abernathy Center.
I'll get to that in a minute. There is one. That's why, okay. So, this is, the IGA is our budget for a year and a half, also, how we make decisions, and we'll probably be having, and the public partners will meet quarterly. So, I have to have this slide in here, because everything we do is driven by the four core values. The partners are going to be making many decisions in the coming months and years, and these core values will be the guide by which decisions are made. And we're working on developing these in more detail in a way that helps us evaluate proposals as they come forward that would be based on these four core values. So, the designers were in town a couple of weeks ago. The work has begun, and the, all of the three designers are on board and working diligently. And I'm going to get back to that in a minute, but first I wanted to make sure that we were all speaking the same language about the budget, because I think it's really important. I know Mayor Holliday and Commissioner Polly, you've heard this, and as has City Manager Conkle, but for your sake, Commissioner Smith. So, there are two goals that we had with our budget approach to the Riverwalk. One was to make sure that we were budgeting for the comprehensive vision, and then also had a strategy to implement an initial project. So, the comprehensive vision, in the vision document, the cost ranged from sixty to eighty million dollars. And we don't know exactly what that means yet. We don't know exactly what would be in a sixty to eighty million dollar project, but the partners chose to aim towards the sixty million dollar target for the comprehensive vision. It might have a dock in it, it might have a pedestrian bridge to the Canema Bluff. We don't even know all of the things that may come up in the next few months. But then out of that, we wanted to have a target which was realistic and would build the Riverwalk. So, the initial target, initial project is twenty-five million, and we feel that this is doable, because we have almost twenty million dollars in hand, and the other five million dollars, we feel, can be raised. In fact, some of the money from the state will require a match. So, we feel like this is a good, strong target for us. And, so this is, I think, a nice description of where we are within this. So, we've got about nineteen point three million. The target for the initial project is twenty-five million, but we know the full build-out is more than that, and it would be, and we're targeting sixty million dollars. That's not all public money by any means. It would be public and private money, private investment from individuals, organizations. We're also hoping to get some federal money to help us with the project. So, that's our framework.
So, let me be clear on this. So, by the time we get through the quote, "full build-out of public spaces," that sixty million dollars also includes all of the public infrastructure?
It could, if that's how the partners decide to allocate funds. This is what I know so far. I know that by the end of about this year, we will have a comprehensive plan for conceptual design for the full build-out. Then we will also, we will need to determine a phasing for that project. What needs to be in Phase One, the initial project, I don't know yet. If it's determined that we have to have a new road, then that would be sort of taken into consideration with the twenty-five million. The one thing that I will say about all of these numbers, the twenty-five millions, they're total project costs, which means they include the design fees, the permit fees, and the construction costs. So, those are, so you encompass everything that it would take to build a project. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Thanks. Good. So, this is where we're headed. Between now and June, we, the design team is leading an effort to determine what the goals are for the Riverwalk, what activities people want to do on the Riverwalk, and what people want to experience. After that, in the summer and the fall, that's when we're going to be doing this conceptual designs, I mentioned, and at the end of draft conceptual designs, we will have a preferred alternative for the initial project of twenty-five million. And that's where, in 2017, we hope to start construction drawings on the preferred alternative of the initial project. So, we're about ready to begin a really robust public process. I want to invite you all to the first public meeting, which is at the Abernathy Center from three to eight on March 30th. It is an open-house format, and we're going to get all of those invitations out this week. And with that, will also be an online forum, and then we will be following up the public meeting with a survey. Also, in the coming months, we will be doing a lot of community conversations. This is the public outreach type of work that was framed up in the vision plan that Christina and Kelly and many others, City Manager Conkle, worked on, and found it a really great way to get meaningful input from the community. And then the next event has not been determined yet, but we're targeting the First City Festival in July. That's my part of the presentation, and then Christina's going to talk about the development strategy.
I do not have very beautiful slides with big pictures, and a lot of this has been mentioned before, so I'm going to go very quickly, but I just want to give the commission an update of where we are. So, as you recall, in the last time we spoke, the development strategy is working with Falls Legacy LLC. It's based on our Metro Community Planning and Development Grant. We have nine hundred thousand dollars of consultant, of money for consultant fees, and this is a true public-private partnership with Falls Legacy. So, it's a very kind of unique approach. We'll be looking at the urban design of streets, how the design of the upland portion can help catalyze development, how it integrates with the Riverwalk, really give strategies to the owner and the city about how best to have the designs of the streets and open spaces, parking, and also which blocks may have, be more attuned to different uses, especially how those uses relate to the Riverwalk. So, a lot of good direction on how best to utilize the land. The results are going to be three deliverables. One is a development strategy, a lot like you saw in the vision document. It'll be adopted by a resolution, and embedded in that, we'll have a public implementation plan, which will provide the public, the sources and uses, and next steps and phases for how public money should be spent, and it'll also provide a lot of information if and when we move forward with a development agreement with the property owner. And then any modifications to the last master plan, CP 1402, we hope to have a combined land use application with the Riverwalk, because a lot of information will be shared. And our, oh, so, our other goal is, we are moving forward with scoping this development strategy with the Design Collective, primed by Snowheta. So, we're actually in the middle of reviewing scopes, and we'll be meeting with Falls Legacy next Monday. So, our goal is to move forward with that approach, and really be able to have one design team integrating their work, and I think there'll be a lot of value add in that. And once again, as always, what can we do to remove and reduce barriers for redevelopment? When we're done, we should be, have a really strong direction on the next steps, and provide community involvement and accountability and transparency in what we do. There's, in April, we'll be having kind of two packages of agreements. The IGA with Metro for the grant funds, a grant agreement with Falls Legacy on how decisions are to be made, and money is dispersed, and then the contracts with Snowheta will be one package, as well as two secondary IGAs that will be processed, transferring money that Oregon City has identified in the governance IGA to Metro, as well as taking in money from Clackamas County that was the match. I think that's it. So, we're available for any questions, if you have any.
I'm good.
Okay.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah, exciting. Thanks.
Anything from you, Mr. Manager?
No, I think, I just, um-
No, but-
No, but it's real quick. Just wanted to reiterate the two dates that you've heard. Wednesday, March 30th, from three o'clock to eight o'clock, is an open house at the Abernathy Center for the Riverwalk on the Lamont Falls Legacy Project, and then on Thursday, March 31st, at two o'clock, at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. The Metro Council will be holding their hearings down here in Oregon City, reviewing the partners' IGA, the Nuala Creek Canyon Plan will be considered there. So, just one of those days.
Staff will be sending out meeting invites to the commission for that, correct?
Yep.
See if they need to write it down.
And the 30th of South Fork, and I already, I think 30th of South Fork also, so we're going to try to make sure we have time to go down.
Thursday from two to four, roughly, yeah.
Thursday.
Is this March?
Yeah.
No, South Fork's on the 23rd.
On the 23rd. Okay, good. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All that I have today.
Okay. Anything for the good of the order? I did want to say that on the Lamont Falls Legacy Project, on 27th, which is a Saturday a couple of weeks ago, we did take Senator Merkley on a tour, and I think he would have loved to have gone some places that we talked about, where we didn't have the time or the resources to get him down below. So, I think he'll be coming back, along with some of the other folks. So, you know, we just keep moving forward, you know, chip off a little bit at a time. It's going to be a long process. So, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.